Yes, sir.
Do you want, Carrie, do you want to start introductions?
Yeah, hi, I'm Terry Parker, Communication Department, and I'm helping facilitate the live folks here.
I'm Amy Lowry, I'm a member of the board and the queen of fun.
I can't follow that.
Right.
I'm Mary Kane, Senior Legal Counsel, not so much the queen of fun.
And Liz Large, the Contracted General Counsel, and oversee the Fun Department.
Oversee the Fun Department.
Yes.
I am Herman Green, a board member and proud member of the Fun Department.
Julia Remedwards, Chair of the Committee, Where Fun Goes to Die.
Like the University of Chicago.
I was gonna say.
None of those.
Danny Cage didn't wrap to the Policy Committee.
Michelle DePass, Board Chair, not very funny, but love being a part of the Fun Committee.
Shanice Clark, Director of Community, supporting, supporting the Fun Committee.
Erin Prosper, Senior Program Manager, Energy and Sustainability, and I will be applying to be on Fun Committee.
Love to have you.
Rachel went for her legal, and I'm not having fun right now.
Mike, do you want to?
Mike Verissimo.
Well, students feedback, families for climate, and I'm having fun with beavers right now.
There you go.
Actually, I was gonna let you know that I bought a T-shirt for this committee, but I wore it last week, so it's not ready, but it says Oxford comma Preservation Society, established 1889, so I will be wearing that at the next committee meeting, just be ready.
Stay ready.
That's good, because you're free to add those whenever you want.
Love the Oxford comma.
Okay, so, let's see, the, I'm just gonna briefly save us on our agenda today, and then we'll dive into it, we're gonna have an update on the Student Conduct Assistance Policy, maybe? And we have a new policy to consider today relating to field trips, in the past, the superintendent, the board approved out-of-state field trips, and this is going to make a shift so that that is done on the administrative side versus coming to the board, so that's, it's a revision of the policy, I'm gonna talk briefly about, we'll have a brief discussion about the complaint policy, we're not actually gonna move any language today, but just have a general discussion about potentially a shift in, in the approach or the structure of how we process complaints, and we'll bring a revision at a later date, an update on fundraising, and then we have some policies and public comment, the climate crisis response, the climate justice and sustainable practices policy, we also have the nondiscrimination, anti-harassment policy, and both of those, we've received some public comments, so we'll have a discussion about some of the comments we've received today, and then the diploma requirements, as you recall, we had a first reading of that already from this committee moving out some changes, and then we had one staff-generated new issue relating to essential skills, and then one relating to more languages that Director Green raised, so we'll talk through both of those, and then we have another, another new policy to consider today that is weapons explosive and firebombs, which I think is just being changed to firearms?
I think weapons.
Weapons, and then public comment, and so I should ask, is there any public?
Yes.
Okay, Kara.
Yep, we do have people sign up for public comment.
Okay, and maybe I should, I could pair that with whatever policy, is it around climate? Or is, sorry Kara, is, what's the topic?
I believe that they're both climate, let me just get to that tab out of the 50 I've opened.
While she's doing that.
You came well prepared to have fun if you have 50 tabs open.
Yes, they're both related to climate.
Okay.
Um, this got added late fender, but the, the language translation memo, so I just wanted to bring that up, and we can deal with whatever.
Okay.
It is listed as the first item on the table.
I'll put it at the back half of the meeting, so you guys can figure out how you wanna...
We've already got plans.
Okay, perfect, okay, so, first item, so we have a pretty full item, but there, I don't think any big, one topic, a bunch of small, medium-sized ones, is there an update on the Student Conduct Assistance Policy?
Not a substantive one, there's been a lot of activity, but nothing substantive to report this year.
Okay, then let's go to the field, the proposed revisions to the field trip policy, do you want to share those changes, Liz?
Mary, do you mind? So, let me pull up a... Does everyone have it, because if it's not in board books, I'm worried.
It's not in board books.
It's not there.
Okay, so I can stop looking.
Okay, how about, how about somebody sends it around, it's not a substantive change, I say, I believe the only change is, and maybe you could just describe it, Liz?
We, the substantive change that we have made to the policy is in, is in sub four, which, in the current policy, which is six, five, oh, oh, one, oh, find it on our current policies page, required that any out-of-state or foreign travel required approval before, before, it could, they could be, students could go on them, so we're just, we have, we have proposed removing that language, we've also made some slight changes to some language about, and it's more to align with the administrative directive of how you, the process for requesting to go on trips, the forms, the, the forms needed, who they go to.
I'm sending it around right now, we'll talk about it.
So, that is, that's the extent of it.
Is she on supposed to hear it right now?
Great, um, so one of the issues, and this isn't really a change in the policy, but more it's how it's implemented, is just that, Liz and I had a discussion about, is just the, I mean, one of, one of the value of the board approving it is you do see kind of what, what's, you know, what's happening out there, and just the, you know, potential inequities of what students get to travel, and, you know, how things get paid for, and a host of other things, and so, sort of a bigger question, again, it's not really about the policy language, because the policy language is just more of like, administratively, how how field trips get approved, but does not go to the underlying, like, who gets to go on field trips, how they get paid for, you know, how, how kids get included, students get included if they can't afford it, which I think is another, another great topic, but it's not really, this is more just a change in who's approving, and originally, when we, this came out of the Whitehurst Report, that one of the, one of the issues relating to staff misconduct with students happened on a field trip that was overseas, and so, one of the Whitehurst recommendation, report recommendations was that we change our field trip policy, which we did at the time, and I can't remember the exact reason, but Guan Lupe, and Guan Lupe supported it, the board signed off on any travel outside of the state, and, which is how we got it, and just based on new processes and everything else, we're recommending a shift that the board no longer engage in approving the field trips, because there's an administrative process that risk, the risk management's involved in, and...
And I know of a recent issue where the person requesting the field trip had done everything right, and there were some administrative delays, and then there wasn't gonna be a school board meeting before the trip left, and so that was gonna then put them at risk of, did they go or not, and that would have had it, so I, I know that because of our board meeting cycle and all of these administrative pieces, it can actually often, it can be sometimes a barrier to, to kids getting what they need, if we, in, in our administrative process, like, we want, we want the opportunities for our students to be successful, but I do think that equity piece is super important, or, I believe.
Yeah, so that's maybe just a different topic for board, board discussion.
Is there a way that we can, because I, I found that really interesting when I first joined the board, to see the field trips and to see the inequity in black and white.
You actually, I mean, we don't actually have to approve them to see what gets, what's been, what, you know, what's happening, because they all go through...
They all go through, they go through risk management.
But don't we approve them, or at least we used to do.
We do.
On the consent agenda.
We just haven't had any for two years because of COVID.
If they're out of the state, but if, we also, it's interesting, I think, too, if we look at field trips that are within the state. Well, I think we should, I, I mean, as a board member, I feel like I'd like to see the, who's traveling, because it's, you know, it's, there are some schools going to Vienna, for instance, and others that are maybe traveling to Joseph, Oregon, or Salem, so...
I'm gonna call on you in just a minute, because we can, we can see the, that information, Michelle, without actually having to approve it.
Okay.
And as the chair, you could put that on the agenda under, like, a particular topic, or we could get a report, or Roseanne might have some suggestion.
Roseanne, who had, can't raise.
The board book has all that information in there, the resolution is only looking at public, the group we have for board members to see is these traveling, whether they're going, what school.
But what's an individual trip, I think she's talking about, maybe I'm wrong, is a broader look at district.
I'm looking at a broader look at not, not student A or student B, but rather which schools are going to which places, and just...
And we actually did look at that one, we had a broader information. And how they're being funded, right?
And how they're being funded. So that's something we could add to the agenda, right?
And there's, it's likely, the data you're gonna want is probably not gonna be substantial until next school year, you just haven't been a lot of, the field trips are, are like pretty low volume right now, and I'm guessing we won't.
Yeah, and then the rather recent requests, but there, there haven't been any, right, in, you know, two years, but I think it's a data, it's data that we could use if we're actually, you know, leaning into our regional, the operationalizing. So I support us not having to do this administrative process and letting that happen elsewhere, but I do think it's good, as one of the data points, if we look at our district, to be cognizant of who's traveling where and who's paying for it.
Anybody have any issue with the language?
One question I have, so, right now, currently, can the community see, like, who's going where to a field trip, or?
In the community, the, the, I guess it depends on the...
Is it like the Lincoln High School basketball team is traveling, can they see that?
Yeah, they can see that, and then, yeah, the current resolution, and, you know, the community will sometime, like, the, say, how to define community, but the school community and maybe parents would get notice of there's a trip.
I don't think it's like, you mean like broadly, community?
Yeah, I, I only ask, because I went, I have gone through, like, my middle school year, I went to a school that was heavily underfunded, to a school that was moderately underfunded, and then I had a grade high school, which is predominantly white school, and so it's been a transition, I know, like, my school went to DC, and the school before that I went to, their big field trip of the year was going out to Eastside, oh, not Eastside, Seaside, and so I do know, like, that there is a difference in that, who gets to go there.
I, I don't think, I mean, I think it's known within the school community, but not broadly, of who's...
It's not published anywhere.
But I think what you heard is there's an interest in having a discussion about that, instead of, let's say, I think we can remove the administrative role of the board approving it, but doesn't mean, like, we're not gonna have a conversation about it, which...
Sort of looking at it from the front end of who's getting, who, where's, who's getting the trips as opposed to the, where it's already, you're at the approval stage.
Any other questions or, with the policy language, is there support to move it out to a first reading?
Please.
All right, we, yeah, we're not motioning.
See, I didn't say a word, I intentionally did not say a word, because...
It's a little lower key here, okay, so I think I see, I hear a consensus from the committee to move it out to the full board for a first reading, so the complaint policies, and this wasn't, Roseanne, was the complaint policy posted?
Yes.
Just the current one, not, no changes? Okay, so, again, this isn't going to be something we're gonna move out of committee today, and actually, there's more changes than, there's a number of changes that are gonna be proposed that are what I consider like smaller changes, but the, the big change that I wanted to just get sort of committees, like, initial thinking about, or, and get people initially thinking about it, and what, what kind of questions would you have, is currently, we have a policy that has three steps in it, and state law only requires us to have two?
No, you can have one.
We can have one, okay, so we've chosen to have three steps, and...
And you can't have four, I mean, that's...
Okay, yeah, so, like, we, we have three steps, and for, for those of us who've been through cycles, and there's been a little bit less given COVID, but is the current process, the first two steps are at kind of the staff level, and then it comes, the third step is to the board, and my observation is that the first two steps are fairly duplicative, and because it's staff, and then staff reviewing staff, and then, and then it gets to the board, and that actually, a little bit of a mercy play to the people who file complaints of not this sort of long, drawn-out process, but you get, you know, one tight response from staff, and if you want to appeal to the board, you can, but it's not a two-step process to go to the board, and also just the amount of staff time, if you look at some of the complaints, that they're hours of work to respond to complaints, but, and it's, it's not, it, the initial response, we want to be thoughtful and thorough and comprehensive and address the complaints, but you're, we're actually having to stop doing it twice, so the proposal, Liz, do you want to share the specific?
I, I think the proposal for, for discussion and thoughtfulness about intending and unattending consequences is, is reducing it from three steps of 30 days each to two steps of 30 days each, so the complaint comes in, staff it up 30 days to respond, if the, the complaint is not satisfied with that response, then it would go to the board, maybe 30 days, unless agreed upon, extensions like we do now, to get that scheduled and heard, so it would, it would reduce the time to resolution for families from 90 days to 60 days, which I think is a big gap, I think you make it more appeals to the board, I, I don't know, I mean, I think that's, that's, that's an open question, whether you would, more appeals would go to the board after just one bite at the apple instead of two, I, I don't know what the, I don't know how, please, go ahead, Michelle.
Is there, is it possible to get a report on what happens at stage one and stage two, because I like the idea of shortening that time, and I also like the idea of, I mean, offering some restorative justice to people, I mean, I think, by the way, Director Green, you've really set us off in terms of, like, just apologizing to people when they come in, and I feel like it's really important for, for us to acknowledge the pain and the hurt and the frustration with the process, and shortening it might be good, but I'd like to know if, how many, how many people complain in step one, get moved to step two, then gets moved to the board, and how many are resolved at step two?
I think we have some of that data, and we can...
Because if they're resolved at step two, yeah, you're, you're saying there may be, there may be more appeals to get to...
I, I think it's an open question, basically, we have, we have to get...
If we know the trend in data, then we can kind of have some idea...
We, we incurred an informal resolution at, at the front end, and, and I think you all met Jamal Tibbs, who has been working with us, and he works closely with the complaint coordinator, see, you know, to reach out and say, can we, can I, can I help you be involved with the, the, the staff or the school that seems to be causing problems, so we have been, that's our, that's our first avenue to try to explore an informal way of addressing it, what can we do here, and then, I, you know, I think with regard to, between step one and the step two, we can get those numbers.
Yeah, I think the other advantage is that, I mean, the closer proximity to the issue it's resolved, the better and more accurate that is, right, it's, it feels better for families, and it's, it's a tighter process without as many chapters in it, I think there's probably some advantage there for everybody, but it's, you know, the rule, the rule gives you the discretion to have, no step can be more than 30 days, and you can have no more than three steps, you could just, you just have to declare where the final stop is, you could decide the board isn't the final stop, I don't think you're gonna do that, but I mean, that, you have, you have some discretion about how to define that complaint process, but you have to have ultimately a final decision that can be appealed to OD.
That resolution, the other thing is, because we know it's so frustrating for families to go through this for 90 days, I'm wondering if we can, I'm noticing in my day job that there's a, kind of using a design process, a human-centered design, so it's designing a process with the end user in mind, you know, the experience, you're, you're thinking about the experience from the, from the other side, basically, and I'm just wondering if we can just give that consideration, not the policy necessarily, but maybe in the administrative directive?
I, I think it's...
That we, that we design a process that's, that, it, it might not make everybody whole, but it can be a process that makes people feel valued and heard, relieves a little bit of tightness in the chest, you know, kind of that sort of miserable, that trauma-informed practice that we, you know, ask our counselors and staff to do, as school staff, just to make, to make the experience more restorative.
I think that's more, I think that, that's largely accomplished through training and culture, and less in the AD and PALS, right, it's not that, you make it more, those rules make it rigid, and the human beings make it humane, right?
Yeah, and just, some history is, in 2017, PPS was coming off of, there had been a complaint about the high school hours, that the ODE found that PPS had to do a corrective action plan, but also they had to fix their complaint policy, because it was, it wasn't in compliance.
And you were part of that complaint, right?
Yeah.
I, for people who don't know that, that's all the information.
So was Mike, and so was Amy Thompson.
So you were on that other side of going through the...
Yeah, and so, like, that was just a random thing, because, like, they didn't have a, when we went to file a complaint with ODE, they didn't have an actual link on the website, and, so, ODE said they had to fix the complaint policy, and then the statute also changed, I believe, and so, in 2017, we did this major overhaul, and there was a lot of scrutiny, I mean, I think the Tribune or the Oregonian had, had done several series about how broken the complaint policy was, and how horrible it was, so we, we did try and build in a lot of humanness, like, given that many of us are parents who've had our engagements with the, with, with the district, and so, I think that's why three steps were put in, but, like, as I see it now in practice, I think sometimes, in some ways, it's more frustrating, because it's like the second person is saying, we already told you we didn't agree with you.
Do we ever, I mean, those are the ones we see, do we ever have a resolution at step two?
Well, that's why we have to get the data.
And it's step one.
But that's the thing, I mean, we only see the ones where step two confirms it, and other people will appeal it to us, but I'm sure sometimes step two, the person reviews it and says, here's a path forward to, to resolution.
Yeah, we'll see the data, I think that's a great question.
If there are 400 complaints, and we're hearing 15, but there are 400, I just wanted to, I wanted to spell that right, now there are not 400. He would fall down.
But if, if, you know, half the complaints are resolved at step two, that's important data to have.
Yes, yes.
Well, it could also be, because sometimes I'm thinking, like, we have two chances to get it, to, like, nail it.
Right.
And so if you have one, it's like maybe there is the, like, this is gonna be the, and, and also the, the person's thinking, I don't need to appeal it to step two, step two, or maybe, like, I can, so I do, but if it's not there, would all just get tighter, and it'll be a better experience?
I think the advantage for me of step two is there are other eyes on it, and people maybe know different things or connect folks, and, and I think about, like, we had a complaint one time where one of the offered was mediation, and the family didn't want to do mediation, because they thought PPS would be the mediators, and they didn't understand it was gonna be a third-party mediator, and when they got to step three, and we, we were able to say that, they were like, oh, yeah, no, that's, then we want to do it that way, we didn't, they didn't understand the step two response, so if we're finding people catching little things like that in step two, rather than with the board, I think the faster we can get some resolve for families, the better, but sometimes it's good to have different eyes on a problem, right?
Well, here's the thing, so, it's, it's not permanent, so if, if, for example, the committee decided, we want to give this a try, we look at the data that's been requested, and we seem to think, like, hey, we think this is a family-friendly approach, and it's also, you know, from a staff standpoint, a positive direction to take, if it turns out, we, you know, need to have three steps, we can always change it back.
I think knowing what, what is the damage.
Where's this request coming from?
Um, okay, so, it's a, something that we talked about last year, there were some technical corrections and some other changes made to the policy, and it's just, if you look at all these complaints, you know, there are hundreds of, sometimes hundreds of pages, and, you know, is that...
So we're trying to figure out a string line?
Well, it's like, do we need to have staff weighing in twice, I mean, that, that's my, my question, is versus, I rarely find step, and maybe we'll see good data, but I rarely find at step two, that the, step two person, administrator is just agreeing with the step one.
Are we in a, is there a timeline where we need to get this done by, I'm, I'm going somewhere, I hope we all know that, is there a timeline where, which, like, we need to get this done by X amount of time?
This specific change?
Yeah. Okay, so then with that in mind, and if we really wanted to try to hit it right and get it right the first time, we got Ms. Shanice in the room, would we, and if we're saying that we want to do it for the, we're trying to keep the families that we're gonna be serving in mind, we want to, there's that old saying, anything that you do for them without them, you do to them, so if we say, let's get the families involved, and let's create a community dialogue around, what do you see, and how would this, what would work best for you, and I know that that, that's why I was asking the question about...
You know, they're gonna think this is a complete setup, because...
And, you know, this is, I, I, I was asking for the, the trend data, and the next thing would be to, the human design conversation, which you have to have the people that are most proximate to the problem.
See, so I'm gonna stop talking, my, my job here is done, we can go home.
I'm gonna say, why, why we didn't do it before is, okay, it was in the middle of a pandemic, we made some changes to the policy, and actually, we had done it, there was a survey, and it actually came back very negative about people's experience, and we didn't have time, just, it wasn't a good time to do community engagement, so, those, those changes were done, are made to the policy, and it seemed like not a good time to add on, like, hey, let's eliminate a step at a time when we can do any community engagement, and so, we went ahead and moved this sort of non-material package, and so that's why we're bringing up now, because we have, we have, we have more time, and it's, it seems like a good conversation to have.
Well, and the issue, like, of course, people who have filed a complaint are, are unhappy, right, like, I mean, there's something wrong, which is why they filed the complaint, so it's hard to judge in that data we got from the surveys, how much of it is the complaint process, and how much of it is the underlying complaint, we want to make the complaint process more humane and better serve our families, so I think we really do need a more in-depth engagement than just the survey to help us really identify that human design use, Michelle, of where can we make this, and, and I think what we all want is revolution, right, we all want to find a restorative way to, to address the complaints, and so, I don't know that our process, the way we have it now, does that, because, you know, oftentimes people will have a complaint come before us, with, I'll, I will often ask the question, what, what does healing look like, and what does correction look like, what is it that you're asking for from us, because a yes or no vote often doesn't get them what they actually want. Because a yes or no vote often doesn't get them what they actually want. And so how do we get to that restorative justice place? Which isn't always a yes or no, right?
There are some statutory requirements, just for what it's worth. And so sometimes it comes off as formalistic from the district, but it's like, we need to do that because that is also one of the things that PPS pre anybody in this room in a position that didn't always do well, which is then when you get to ODE. So there are, so yes to human design, but also within what the statutory requirements.
We have to have a final decision, whatever that looks like. There has, in order, they have to, the complainant has to take that final decision to ODE. So I think that's, that, whatever that clarity is of that.
Okay, so it has to, so I can't imagine, you know, that going to ODE would be like an amazing experience, you know? I'm going to go to the state instead.
Well, actually, I mean, I will say, actually, some people like, for example, the parent coalition just went straight to the state because it was like, because you could.
So is there, I asked this before, but an ombuds person? That's what Jamal's, Jamal's role. Is he in the, in the auditor's office or?
No, family.
He's family engagement, but is that the right place to put that? I mean, or, I mean, is he functioning?
He's a person, Jonathan, but he's not in the engagement department.
Okay, so I'm just, it's just a question out there on the table.
We had an ombudsman.
So, yeah. Was it under the city auditor, the auditor or?
Nope, it was under the chief of staff, Stephanie Stodden.
Okay. He's the, he's the family liaison.
Family liaison.
His timely name is titled Jamal.
And, and we, and, and most, in, in many instances, when we get a complaint that looks like it, you know, it, it would resolve with a little assistance from Jamal. It'll reach out, he goes to the families, he'll go to the schools, he'll help with that. So that is, I mean, we, and even on the webpage that talks about the complaint policy, we talk about the various levels because frankly, the formal complaint process is the longest. So if you're looking, if you have a child that you believe needs attention now, he's a must, you know, going to Jamal or, you know, or dealing with it in the school level. Hopefully resolve it much more quickly.
A lot quicker than.
I've seen Jamal in schools when I've visited. Same with schools. And he has the authority to make a decision at his level.
He's, he's bringing together decision makers for the, I mean, I think he's truly a liaison. I don't think he has, I don't know that he's directing decisions, but, but that, the spirit of it is to find the right solution for the state and the family. And so, it's, sometimes it's a miscommunication, sometimes someone hasn't understood at school level what was needed, sometimes there could be language barrier, I mean, it could be.
Or going to the right people.
Going to the right people.
I mean, this district, yeah, walking into, you don't know who to talk to. And so, to all help with that, who we, who do I need to connect you with to resolve?
Maybe I need to put him on speed dial. Sometimes I don't know who to talk to either. You call Roseanne. Yeah, no, Roseanne's the board liaison, Jamal's family liaison.
Okay, so what I heard is some interest in some data and I think once we have the data, if we can circulate it to the committee members and also to Shanice, maybe to what you're thinking about when, if you looked at Shanice, what, if you were thinking about what the question is, about just that sort of the process and I guess the steps involved in, it's like, what, what would be the question we want to ask community members? So I'd love to hear sort of your, I mean, not, not being the spot now, but what, what that would look like to Director Green's question.
Yeah, I just think, I mean, I hate to add work to people, but before we go and start coming up with something that's going to be great for everybody, I'd like to hear from the people that we think is going to be great for and then see, have some of their input be part of this, this process and allow the community to, to own it. Because anything that you own, that you feel like that you're responsible for, helping to put together, you can stand behind a lot, a lot stronger. And so, I'd like to see, for me, that's, that's just where I'm thinking as far as like, especially with this, because this whole thing is about their ability to share with us what they're concerned about.
Yes, and so the last survey were people who were, I mean, this is another thing to think about, were people who knew how to get to the system and how to use it. I think there is, I think there is still that question and we.
It would also.
Probably get to the people who.
Right, because what about the ones who want to complain, need to complain and don't know how? I don't want to hear from the angry people, just, I shouldn't say that, I, I lie. I do. I don't only want to hear from the angry people. I would like to hear from individuals who aren't angry today, but if they were to get angry tomorrow, this is what, this is what I would like to see. This is how I would like to, this is what I think the process, this would be helpful for me. This would help me to share, share my grievances and not feel intimidated by a system that seems so robust that I may feel like I'm going to get lost in the process and therefore, why even complain or say something at all? Because it look, the way that they designed this doesn't look like they were thinking about or care about me at all. So I want something that's going to be simple enough for me because I'm a dad who sits at home, who doesn't like his son's third-grade teacher because they said or did something for whatever the reason. And I need a, a simple way to get through because I pick at keys.
Well, and there's, I mean, there's, there's all sorts of things like that instance. If you have an issue with the teacher, you should take it to the teacher and then to the principal. And then if that doesn't get to anywhere, then kind of hit up the district. So that's part of it too, is like, I think that's part of what Jamal does is sometimes when someone.
That's the beauty of.
Right, reaches out, yeah. But I do think the complaint, I do think the complaint website is actually pretty user-friendly if you want to, like, the actual form is, but you have to know it fair enough.
So.
And, and let's see, one last thing, you would want to do a random sample. I mean, talking to people that have been through the process that had resolution and some that didn't, you know, you'd want to have a random sample and people have gone through the process and have been resolved or kind of frustrating and, and learn from that. You know, in a perfect world, you would, you would know how people, what people's experiences were having gone through.
So we have some of that.
Do we have that data also?
It's not, it's whatever we brought to the policy committee, was it last year, Julia?
It was last year.
Thank you, it's been a long year. So the last policy committee year, I don't remember how far back when it was actually.
Oh my gosh. Is that in board books somewhere?
We'll get it to you, we'll get it, you'll have to find it, we'll get it to you. I'm just, I guess my question really is, do you, is that, should we start with that to see if that's a sufficient sample? Because what you will see is that people who've been through the complaint process don't, don't emerge really happy. They've been through a lot of, I think that was part of the origin frankly of the discussion.
Okay.
Is it timely?
Did we, so I would expect a large number of people would be dissatisfied, but did we do a large enough sample to get the people that might have found resolution and been okay?
Well, I think we sent it to every person who.
But none of them responded.
Right, okay, so the people that self-selected were more likely to.
We, yeah. We'll pull that circulating and we can see what else. And I think it'll give you a snapshot that I would be surprised if it were dramatically different if it were refreshed for the last eight months.
So I want to move to the next agenda item. My question for any committee members, is there anything else from a staff perspective that you feel like you need? I think we've got that on the table. And the question for staff is, do, is there anything else you need or question you have that you want board members to answer?
No, I think we need to come back to talk about how we would engage to Director Green's point about, we think we're doing this and it, it management is having to make sure that they fix them also.
Yeah, so and maybe one of the things we could do right now is turn to the translation because one of the things is like, you know, making sure our complaint policy and other policies are accept. So speaking of accessibility to families.
Complaint policy's already been translated.
So, but just in that, just in that theory, so we had talked early on about having our most important family policies be translated and Ailey and Rachel were.
Mary Fur and I hope you've seen the article on her that came out in EdWeed covering her incredible contributions to translation and accessibility. Yeah, yeah, Rachel, Mary Fur, Rachel's awesome too. That was not me.
And we'll have to talk for you anyway.
Talk for her, Rachel.
I'm not going to take back my class.
She's, she's fabulous and she's getting the love on EdWeed, so that's great.
It was on LinkedIn today, hosted.
Yeah, Portage, and PPS shared it on their Twitter and it's on there, so. But Mary Fur and Rachel worked together on looking at, you can see that memo that they wrote about what it would take and the cost. And it's really fascinating, the cost per word, if you just look at, you know, the frequency and availability of translators. And so, you know, one of the questions is, given the cost of this, what policies should we start with? I think, I mean, what I said is, I think we should do all the policies eventually because I think it's important that our families have accessibility. But especially as we're going through the policies and pulling them and changing them, we definitely have some that are higher priorities and we already know the complaint policy is translated to all the languages. But there are others that we might want to think about as being high priority policies. So Rachel, what, yeah, what else do you have to add?
I, I just wanted to add that, just in order to get this cost estimate, I had to go through the entire policy manual and count the number of policies, pages.
But we have fewer than we had.
We have 21 fewer.
Good job.
And we're still going. But that, but that really, you know, a thousand pages is, is two rings of paper. 300,000 words.
Hopefully recycled.
Wow. 300,000 words.
Printed on both sides.
So anyway, it's just, that was interesting for me to, actually, I don't know if anyone's ever done that, looked at that. And so, it's, you know, maybe something to think about. Mary and I have talked and looked at ADs and things like that, that, you know, we maybe rescind over time that just aren't helpful and were necessary, that maybe came from a time when someone said, we should have a policy on that, we have to write it down. There was a time when we had to write things down, so they were written down, you know? That was a philosophy. So there's room for bringing this cost down, so I think.
So, so my proposal would be that we direct, the chair from Edwards, that you direct a subset of committee to create a priority list of the policies we'd like translated the soonest and begin with those. Because I think, you know, translating everything, the thousand pages right this moment is probably not the best use of our resources. So if we had, you know, a couple of people from the committee, Rachel and Mary Fur, what do we think are the highest priority? Bring that list back to the committee for approval and then begin the translation.
And I think there were some other recommendations at the end as well.
Yes. Yeah, so, I mean, looking at, seeing if IT has data on the webpage on what people would look at the most. Now, I did a little research myself and I could tell how many people look at policies page, but I could not get any further detail of what they clicked on. But that's, I'm not in IT, so that was just what I could see. So we could, we could look at that.
Yeah, the, the other place could also be like, also talking to principals, just getting like what they hear from their families and their, you know, what's the policy on it? Is there a budget? So, I mean, so.
195,000.
But how is, how does that work?
That's the cost, not the budget.
That's a cost, so like, how would that get into the budget, next year's budget process?
I think through the board budget, we're looking at different subjects. I mean, it's not, it's not currently in a budget anywhere. There's other pieces in there, weren't there, for the recommendations?
Yeah, there's three recommendations at the end of the memo.
And then reviewing the current profile of families that need communication in other than the five languages.
I think there was a question like, do, are the five languages still the top five languages?
They, they are. I mean, this is, this is coming from Mary Fur and like, her recommendations. Now, the other thing too is, if you look at the language access page, people who have other than these languages can call and have someone read to them or talk with them over the phone. So that's also a popularity for other than these five languages.
We've also provided copies, you can, people requested the board office for a policy that's like.
So if someone calls and says, I'd like this translated into a language, then we do that for them?
Yeah, and it's done, it doesn't get passed around.
I, I do think there needs to be some, and to the extent we get data of which policies are looked at. So we have, we have a feeling about which ones are most important. We actually have some data of like, what people are trying to find. And that could be policy pages or other search terms. There's, there is still so much volume in that policy manual. Part of accessibility is actually clean, continuing to clean it out so that the most important information is accessible.
Are you like channeling like an agenda item?
You know, I like the recisions because I want people to be able to get the information they're looking for, they're looking for policy, they're actually trying to solve a problem and we want them to be able to solve it. I think the other thing is to think about in context, what are the other pieces of really important information and are they translated? How do you, if you're prioritizing dollars, what are, I mean, you could, you could start to make this bigger, but I just, I think we need to think holistically about how families access information, what's the most important and how do they get the most important information?
Are they doing it through the policy or is it some other place where they're going?
Like the search and seizure policy, it would be important to have translated it. But I think we need to look and see what people.
Like enrollment and transfer.
We have a search and seizure?
Yeah.
No, I thought I changed the name.
It's changed, we changed.
Oh, it's got a terrible name though.
But it, it basically, I mean, one of the things is that means that the school can in local parentas, cannot in local parentas give police access to students who are with us.
Okay, before we get too deep.
Michelle, sorry, you were saying.
Before we get too deep in this, I just, I would like to ask Ailey, if you will be on point for working with Rachel, any committee member who's interested, tell, you can come back with a set of recommendations and also, like, not just the recommendations, working with whoever else on the committee is interested. But it can't be three people, it can't be a four committee. And then also the other piece on, working with staff on the budget piece, I guess that'd be Roseanne if it's the board office budget. Does that, does that work for everybody? And so, if you guys have policies that you're interested, like, Ailey's the person from the board perspective.
I had a quick question and that's that if with language, there, if the technology is there so we can do, translate things to digital form as we're talking about printing on paper and make, make keywords prominent that people might, like, every single search term that may come up. And if we can use, I know for instance, some, some website developed, or some, some backend websites work very well with a translation, with Google Translate, I know for sure, but I think there's better ones out there where you can type in complaint.
Sort of create an index so that whenever this word comes up, it populates.
Artifact, if you will, it lives in the clouds, in the cloud that allows people to interact with our policies in whatever language they're comfortable in. So it would have their language, in other words, to say, you know, if this available is available in Micromission language and have that in English, it could say that, but in the language of the person, the native language, it would be written out. Not everybody reads their language that they speak at home or writes it or literally in it, but at least it's, if, if you see it in Vietnamese, you can click on it and you can get the information you're looking for in Vietnamese. So I've seen it successfully used in community engagement software. Bang the Table is one that is a global company and, and they, their language translation interface is very robust.
Well, I'll connect with Rachel and we'll get some data. Are you, who's going to follow up with IT? Sarah will follow up with IT. And then we will.
And Rachel, thank you.
We'll have someone follow up with IT and we'll.
Thank you for putting that together.
Sure. Thank you for counting all of those words. I was like, it was like, oh wow, we really need to do some work here. Julia's already started us on a great topic.
Yes. Okay, great, thank, again, thank you. So fundraising, this is just a very short update. Had some like, just data around the amount of money that's being raised and also getting information from district leaders about how it plays out in schools and the different pockets of money, the different buckets of money, the capital, the. the capital, the staffing, or the F T E, and then just the more consolidated budget, student body funds, and like how, how to have an equitable approach. So just an update that conversations ongoing, and just kind of fermenting in a good way.
Is there not an audit teed up that's looking at student?
The student body funds?
Student body funds.
I mean, in the sense that it's, it's, that audit is tracking how student body funds are handled.
Okay, that's a process.
Cash handling.
Versus like what it is. So just more to come with that, just so people know that there's like some conversations happening around that. So next on our agenda is policies in the public comment period, and I'm just gonna jumble the order, and it's okay with the committee members here, just because the other ones will go really quick. We have three policies that are out. We have two. We have three policies out for public comment right now. The first one I want to talk about is the non-discrimination anti-harassment policy, and we did get public comment on this, and everybody should have had it. I think Roseanne sent it around, and it related to athletic offerings and uniforms, and and Liz and I had a conversation this morning, and the understanding is, and you might put this in your own words, Liz, but that it's already covered in the section of the policy. Help me out here.
All of the programs.
Is it the district, the second paragraph, the third paragraph?
The district prohibits discrimination harassment in all of its programs and operations, including, not limited to, a list of things, but, but the operative word is all of its programs and operations.
So it's already inclusive, and so what we talked about is, instead of just, you could say athletics, and then you go down a list of all the other extra curricular activities, and so how we thought we'd approach it is, I would respond to the person who sent the comment in to let them know that we believe it's already covered, and then also that there would be a conversation with the district athletic director, Marshall Haskins, to share this concern that's come in, and that we believe it's already, it's covered, but to make sure the athletic department is aware of the concern and how we should approach it. So unless there's a different approach, or anybody has any questions, that's how we would take care of that public, address that public comment.
I'm looking for the comment now.
I'm, I'm wondering if, so when we start, when they start saying the uniform, I don't know who made the comment, because I haven't looked at the comment, or is this the one I'm reading right here? You're reading the same thing? So when they say athletic offerings and uniforms, I only think about the sports that I'm, I'm involved in. So, sorry. But with that being said, girls' basketball, I think part of the, if we're talking about uniforms and diversity, then it should be, we should be helping, or I don't know if we can, but like with the, their undergarments, and I'm specifically thinking about the sports bra. I've got three daughters, and sports bras are, they're part of the, I feel, they should be like part of the uniform, it should be part of something, because it's a, it's a protective gear, the same way a cup is for, for football, and the same way we provide a cup for football, we should be providing the, the sports, and it's, it's, you feel weird saying it, because, but I've got, I try to, try to throw that out there, but since I got three daughters, I've.
My former colleagues would love you. I don't think Mary and you are feeling at all uncomfortable.
Okay, but.
For other women in the room.
But for, I feel like, I feel like that should be part of it, versus it being what it is right now, is we'll say that, yeah, we provide it if it becomes available. So if we get a donation from Nike, or if we get a donation from Adidas, or if we get this, then we can provide it, but if we don't, then, huh, sucks to be you, when what we should be saying is, because that we believe this is imperative to the, to your ability to do what you need to do out there, we want you to be comfortable and safe, we're going to provide it, the same way we provide a jersey, shorts, and so on.
So it's a great point, I love it. This is what being the parent of multiple daughters will be.
Yes, it does, yes, it does.
I don't think it necessarily goes to this particular policy, but I think what we could say is, maybe, Mary, when you have a conversation with the district athletic director, ask, ask about the status, I think it would be useful for, it's, it's a, it's a great question. Because I do know that they get a set amount of money, versus each schools, in the, like, Nike athletic deal, and they get to pick what they buy.
I think it, it should be a requirement. I mean, that's just me, it should, it should just be, you get a jersey, you get shorts, you get that, the sports bra.
Okay, so.
I'll talk to Marshall.
Okay, great. I'm not sure it needs to come back to the policy committee, but maybe you could just do this and update. Always at the budget time, you know that.
Hey, it is gonna be a different budget season now that I'm working.
You would have won.
I would have won.
Anything else with that policy, Larry?
Okay, so the next policy that's out for public comment is the diploma.
Oh, supposed to text. Oh, yes, I was supposed to text Margaret, so she could step out of another meeting to come.
Okay.
Do you wanna go to climate?
Yes.
That was gonna be a long one.
Well, let me do, let me see if this is a short one, because I don't, I'm not sure.
Maybe I can stall as far running to the restroom.
Would you like to take, should we take like a two or three?
Yeah, let's do it. Fantastic, thank you.
I think you're gonna wanna be here for the firearms.
I definitely wanna be here for firearms.
Okay, Herman Green, bras and firearms.
As I said.
Unforgettable, isn't it?
Right. So you said this was the committee where fun comes to die, and that's not true.
I just, my son looked at the universe. So as everybody recall, we thought we had just some pretty basic cleanup because of the change in statutes, that we needed to add the half a civic credit, or is it a quarter? A half a civic quarter, and then also drop the word English before Language Arts. And so we made those, and then two things happened. When we were having the discussion the night of the board meeting about the essential skills piece, staff, and I had a conversation next day that maybe we want to change that because of the status, the sort of current change in status of essential skills at the state level. And then in addition, Dr. Green, insightful as always, asking a great question about students who, whether, whether students who are, have a primary language other than English, whether they're required to take yet a third language. And we have an answer to your question, and also, the, the answer is, no, they don't. And because you asked the question, and it's not really clear in our policy, we have some proposed language, and Mary, or Liz, do you wanna?
So the language, world language credit is for any language other than the student's primary language. So that's, that's the, actually, that was just revised by. So it answers your question in five lines to the.
So do you think if a family read, read that, they would know that they didn't have to take another world language?
So if, if a child was taking Language Arts, that satisfies the world language credit because they speak another language at home?
Yes.
Great.
So their fluency in English is counted as?
Their world language.
As a world language.
But it's not only called English on the thing, it's called Language Arts.
It's called Language Arts.
I think we should put a clarifying sentence there saying.
I do too.
Meaning Language Arts meets that requirement for students whose.
Primary language.
Primary language is not English. Because since we're changing it from English to Language Arts, I think.
Yeah, I agree.
That's unclear.
We also have a large range of people that are moving, that come, immigrate from other places that have, some are from very highly educated communities in their home countries, and some are not. Some are moving here because of the opportunities that we have here. So I think making it really clear for people.
This is huge, I don't know if anybody else, like, like how huge this really is. I interact with a lot of Somali families, and I hear all the time how frustrating it is for these families to have to, and these students, to have to take Spanish or French or something else, and they're also doing like the English, the, I mean, they're doing so many different things.
Yeah.
And now for us to come back and say, no, you don't have to do those other things, and that this, this will count, this is huge, this is a big deal. This is gonna be a big deal, and so this is exciting.
So when we, the next board meeting, when I'm doing the revisions, we'll talk a little bit about how this can bring them back, you can talk about what a big deal it is.
I will definitely talk.
And you'll be front, okay. So any issue with, with that?
No, because I'm gonna go straight. I'm gonna go with the. You asked me to change the language, I just wanted to make sure that I captured that.
What, Dr. Lewis?
Oh, the.
The change that you'd like me to.
Yes, of the, the sentence under that one, so the red line sentence two, world language credits for any language other than the student's primary language. This means that students enrolled in Language Arts who are, meet.
The requirement.
The requirement if their home language is not, their home language is a language other than.
You know, it's ironic, because many people that immigrate here also already speak two languages.
Right.
If not three.
Do you have that, Mary?
I think I have it.
Monolingual.
Okay.
Oh, we're just gonna give, oh, yeah.
And add a couple commas.
I'll, I'll add.
You guys can.
Oh, I don't need to, I'll show it to Liz, and then fifteen will appear.
There are rules.
There are rules.
Yeah, yeah.
You can always count.
As the P E major, I'm like fine with whatever you guys decide. Okay, so the essential skills, so it's a little bit of a judgment call about whether we change this, because it may change again, but I think we're gonna make the call that we're gonna make the change so that our policy isn't.
Clear.
Yeah, our policy is clearer. And so would one of you explain the changes? I don't think they're material, but they make it clear what you're suggesting.
And the essential skills?
And the essential skills.
Yes. Do you want me to?
Yes.
Okay, great.
So.
So for the essential skills, the graduation requirements have been, the essential skills have been removed to graduation requirements for students currently at sophomore year and above in high school. So class of twenty twenty-five, two twenty-three, twenty-four, sorry, class twenty-four and earlier. The current freshman, it is going back to the state, the state is reviewing the policy about what to do about essential skills. So the current freshman class and students younger, we don't know what the requirements are to be at. So there is a committee that is being formed, both in the state legislature, and then also that is working through O D E, that will determine for ensuing years what that means. So that committee is starting to convene, the last that I saw was potentially this summer, and then wouldn't have decisions until fall. It might be twenty twenty-two. And they've been given a.
It's that there's a runway for it, that I'm sure that it's gonna take a while to discuss, so.
So it wouldn't be this year, we wouldn't be looking at this summer and this fall.
That's cool, though, that you can, you can show proficiency in your, in the language you're comfortable in, it's really great.
Yeah, so the essential skills, right, so this goes back a number of years, and they were phased in over time, right? So first it was reading, then it was reading, then it went to math, and then it went to writing at the end. So now it's reading, writing, and mathematics were the, were the essential skills. There are a number of ways to demonstrate it, and what is in the policy is how we do it at a local level. So you can create samples of work at the local, at the local level, and that, so that's what the policy is speaking to. And what it did, particularly in the policy, was to allow students to demonstrate proficiency in, in their home language or primary language. And so that's really what the pieces underneath the essential skills are, are speaking to. And, and Margaret was right, I should have trusted her, it is, they are to, I know. Every time.
So.
And they have to provide a.
Is there any, is there any committee discussion or question about the revisions to that section?
No.
Knowing that we might have to change them again?
Yeah, it sounds very dynamic.
So I'm gonna ask for the committee if you're, we advance both the clarifying language from Herman, and also the new changes to the essential skills, like there's a support to move that out of the committee? As an amendment to the, as to the policy that's currently out for public comment? And I'm gonna suggest that we have a, because there's, there's no, there's no time element, that we just have another first, first reading and start the twenty-one day clock again?
Okay, I think that's great, and, and that also includes Ailey's language.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, that was a protecting amendment.
Well, we can send, if you'd like, an email with the proposed language before the, oh, just that sentence, that Ailey's. Ending up a little.
Right, and I sent you just an email right now saying we should change it to primary language instead of home language, because that is in line now with what the rest of the policy is.
So the other thing I was wondering is, do we need to describe primary, to define primary language? Because that seems, is that a new terminal, a new term of art?
That was, I, well, that was the language that was in the definition, the statute definition.
The statute just defined primary.
Okay, if you guys think it's clear. Pardon?
I don't know what she said.
Primary language and that's.
Oh.
I say lengua, but.
Let's not muddy the waters if we don't have to, but let's not.
I thought primary language seemed more accessible than what we had in there, which was.
Home language or. Language of origin.
Language of origin.
I think primary language.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't gotta muddy the waters, let's not do it, but if, I mean, if we feel like, hey, you know what, though, like, this could cause somebody to be like, well, what is it? Then, I mean, it makes sense, but not for the, just the sake of, we need to pass this through.
I think if someone has a question about what a primary language is, they can ask that, I think it's.
I am curious how we, because I know that, especially for students who come from, who are Muslim and come from highly Islamic countries, they, many of them either speak Arabic and don't know how to write in it, or either write in Arabic or don't know how to speak it, along with like, you know, second to third generation, you know, especially Latino students, especially the ones who like, how would that fit in for the ones who can speak it but don't know how to write it? Because there are, I, I do, and I do know families who, that, they're, that's, that's what's at home.
That, we're seeing that more because of different generations of people that speak different languages at home, and Portland State actually has a program, if you speak Persian at home, but you don't know the, the written language.
So we're not, yeah, we're not precluding people from taking the world language, so if they wanna. So we're not, yeah, we're not precluding people from taking world language. So if they wanted to take Spanish. And speak Spanish at home already, or if they, they, they speak Somali and want to learn French, or whatever it is, or um. They can do that. I think what it's saying is we're not gonna add an extra burden to students who already are familiar with another language. Because I think the goal of the world language requirement is to expose people to another language. And, and two years, I mean, what is the requirement? Two years?
Two.
Two years of high school Spanish. I don't know, are you gonna be fluent in reading and writing it?
Yeah, but like I, I have a question, like, let's say, because this, uh, this is actually a real one. Um, like, let's say that I speak fluent Spanish, but um, I, you know, write Spanish at a fifth grade reading level.
Great, then you're already covered in your primary language and you taking English, Language Arts in English mean that you have satisfied the requirement for graduation. You don't have to take Spanish again or take French or anything.
But you could take Spanish too, if you are, if you wanted to.
Right.
But you're not required to.
So the, the language we use in a number of places, I don't know if this is helpful. So try not to muddy the water. But when we use the, um, so when we enroll students, we use language use survey, right? And the language we use is most heard, most used.
So is your concern any that, that if we reduce this requirement, students won't be held to a high enough standard in their primary language? Or what's the?
No, I'm just wondering, I'm just like, just wandering around, like, how is it defined as primary?
Yeah, is it, how, how is someone gonna demonstrate what their primary language is?
Yeah.
Right. So I think that, yeah, that's, so I, I think that's a good question. And I think that there are, so we do some, there are some mechanisms that we currently use. And so I guess that maybe that's something we need to look at. It's one of the mechanisms we currently use. Currently, we use like that, the, the registration.
Yes.
So whatever they.
And there's this.
Yeah.
Language use survey. And there's this, yeah, it's a state. Uh, a, a state requirement. So we talk about what was the language at home. So we have that information for all students.
I think we also go further to ask what language you'd like to receive materials in. So that would indicate if there's a fluency in terms of like reading.
But yeah, I mean, we usually ask that about the, the, um, the families, right, and not necessarily the students. So I think that, that, that may be a nuance that we need to.
Just given the time, um, I think that might be a topic. Is there an AV connected to the?
It's a formal policy?
Yeah.
So. If the committee, um.
I say.
If the, if the committee would allow, what I'd like to do is send it to a first reading, Roseanne, if that's okay, to send the, the policy for a first reading. And if you feel that you need between now and the board meeting to add a clarifying word or two to address this issue. I was just gonna ask. No, like next, no, next week. It's just gonna be first read again.
Okay.
Because we have to start the process over again.
My favorite was when one of my first board meetings, we were doing the third first reading of a policy. And I was like, what is happening now?
The math.
We're just trying to confuse new board members.
New board members. So this will be the second first reading.
Well, we're having a second first reading that's in our agenda. So um, what I'm gonna ask Mary and Margaret, if you all.
I'm sorry.
If you all have like some sort of perfecting thing. As educators, as educators and lawyers. Um, to address the issue that Danny raised, I think, um, is the committee okay with giving them the discretion?
Yes.
To.
Yes.
Make change. Okay.
We're good.
It's a, it's a great question. Um, but it seems like that would really send us down. I could just tell how you guys were like.
Well, we were just looking at that because we're revising to, to support with the state standards, but looking at the, the language preference that's in our registration.
Okay, but you guys can, I guess, we'll give you the.
We'll give you a perfect.
At the org again, figure that out.
So that, that material's going out tomorrow, so.
It, well, okay, you have a deadline.
Wait till the next meeting.
My head hurts.
Perfect is the enemy of the.
Or it could go till March first.
Is there, is there any reason why we wouldn't just say March first? Well, because it's, it's just ready to go.
I mean, it's ready to go. We can do it.
And then we'll owe Mary and Margaret a box chocolates.
Love that idea.
Okay.
I'm looking for fun.
So um, next, we're gonna go to the, the climate policy and um. The order I'm gonna do this in is, uh, we had, um. We're trying something new that if you got, um, if, if an entity or a business or an organization or association or coalition submitted public comment. We posted it in the board book publicly. Um, for like individuals who comment, um, those, that's just posted and circulated to, to board members. And so we did receive, um, two, like entity or organizational, uh, public comment. And one, I know you're, you know, you're gonna, um, comment in a moment, so we'll, um, have you. So we not only had a chance to read it, but we can also provide public comment. And then we also received. Um, some comment from Northwest Natural. And they had a, um. That a number of different comments about different sections and actually proposed other language. And um. With the exception of two of them, they were commenting on old language that had been superseded by other versions. I did send a note back to them last week saying that they had commented on the wrong version. If they wanted to re-signate comments, they could. I haven't heard anything from them. So, I mean, they have had, they had five or six days to come back if they wanted to. Um, but what I'd like to do is ask Erin to, um, maybe read the section number and the language that they commented on. And then, um, sort of the high level staff, um. Perspective on, on the comment.
Yeah, I'll start off by just prefacing it. Um, so Northwest Natural is our only gas utility. Their product is natural gas, which is methane. Uh, methane is a greenhouse gas. Um, so they have been developing a new product that they're calling renewable natural gas. Um, so a lot of their comments in here are based on that product. Uh, what renewable natural gas is, um, is basically, it's the same product. It's still methane. But they're capturing it from wastewater treatment plants or landfills or dairy farms, anywhere where methane is a natural byproduct. Uh, typically, that would just burn up into the atmosphere. But what they're doing is they're capturing it, putting it into their pipeline, calling it renewable natural gas. So it is less carbon intensive than, um, conventional natural gas that is sourced as a fossil fuel underground. Um, but it's still methane, you're still burning greenhouse gases. So just keep that in mind. Um, so.
Don't, don't they have a proposal to have more of a mix of the renewable fuel?
They do.
In twenty thirty-five and nine twenty.
They do. They're already putting it into the pipeline, but basically, um, what it's gonna do is it's gonna drive up prices. They're gonna ask customers to pay. Uh, more like higher rate if they wanna use that in their.
Right.
In their mix, so. Okay, so the first item they commented on was goal one point one, number two. Um, so this is, you know, one that says prohibit the installation of fossil fuel infrastructure, which is gas-fired equipment in all new buildings and major modernizations from here on out. And phase out fossil fuel infrastructure on all existing buildings. Um, so, you know, they, they basically want us to change the language to allow for renewable natural gas to replace electrifying our buildings. Um, but through our public engagement, it's very clear that electrification, it was something that we need to focus on. And it is our, it is our very clear path to decarbonizing our buildings because, um, the electric utilities have committed to be a hundred percent renewable by twenty forty. So, um, in conjunction with that, we can convert our buildings to electricity and be, um, powered by a hundred percent clean energy. Um, and the second one is goal.
Four.
Four, yeah. Goal one point one, number four. Um, so this is the one about limiting the amount of refrigerants and, um. And managing them. So this, this one they wrote in here just says limit the quality of refrigerants used. The, the one that ended up in the final policy is limit the amount of refrigerants used, manage existing refrigerants with best available technology. Um, so they're proposing for us to, um, phase out refrigerants with global warming potential. Uh, by a certain year, um, ensure that refrigerants are appropriately disposed of for new equipment sourced with lower global warming potential refrigerants. So they're basically just adding more detail to it. Um, and I don't have a problem with this, but I think it's a little bit in the weeds for the policy. So, um, I, my comment is just that we keep it in mind for the implementation plan.
So it's not that it's necessarily in conflict, it's just.
Yeah.
More like.
It's just more detail.
More detail on how to do it.
Yeah. Uh, the rest of the items on here were all void because they were either taken out or changed in a way that the comment just didn't really. Um, makes sense anymore. So.
Thank you for taking a look at those comments. I appreciate that.
Of course.
Um, I think if, before we have any discussion, I'm gonna ask, um, the two individuals who signed up for public comment to provide. Public comment. And then if we have, have any discussion, either, um. Any, any of the comments that have been made or, um, Erin's, um. Staff's perspective, then we can, we can do that. But let's start with, um, public comment.
We have Noel Studders, the back. She probably pronounced everything.
Thank you. Chair Brim Edmonds, um, members.
Um, can I just ask, Terry, can, can you hear that sitting back there?
If anyone's a customer, that would be really helpful for the people.
Sure.
I have to stop.
Okay. First thing I wanna say is I've been really deep in Riggler Elementary for seven years. It's so heartening. You all are talking about three different policies that'll make a huge difference for the immigrant communities that are there at that school. So. Kudos to you all. Very inspiring to be here. Um, my name's Noel Studders Spivak, A U G B pronouns. I serve on the Board of Families for Climate. And for the love of all children, we strongly encourage PPS to drop, to adopt the climate crisis response policy, policy in its current form. I'm here to share a story inspired by two PPS students. Last April, PPS, two PPS students testified about the health and climate risks of natural gas before Portland City Council. Also to the Multoma County Commissioners as they voted to phase gas out of new buildings. That week, Northwest Natural issued letters to the city and county to correct the record and dismiss the claims of the students' false. Alarmed by the gas industry's disinformation efforts, retired physicians and climate justice organizers knew we had to do something. To introduce truth and science to the public discourse. Led by, um, Oregon Physicians for Social Responsibility, I was part of a team that co-authored a comprehensive report to educate public officials. The report includes over eighty links to peer-reviewed research and policy papers supporting transitioning away from natural gas toward electric heating. It was endorsed by over sixty-five BIPOC-led community and climate justice organizations. And this fall, we hosted constituent meetings with state legislators and their staffers to brief them on the transition toward electrifying our buildings. And I should have reached out to you all also, but I didn't think of it at the time. Um, since we issued that report, momentum's been building. The United States has joined the Global Methane Pledge. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District is adopting a law that will phase out all commercial natural gas furnaces by twenty twenty-nine. And the city of Eugene has laid the foundation for banning gas in all new construction. Although it may feel very uncomfortable voting for a climate strategy that a longtime fossil fuel partner, PPS, really is on the right track. And we commend your leadership for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mike Rosen.
So I have heard Erin's comments. I don't have anything to add. So I, I don't want to speak.
Okay. We just gained back three minutes.
Did you hear that, Tara?
Yes, I did. Thank you. That, that, that concludes public comment then.
Thank you. Um, is there any committee discussion?
I don't find the. Comments from Northwest Natural Gas change my perspective on the policy. I think I agree with the public testimony that we heard and what Erin said. I think we've, we've created a good policy that does what we need it to do. And I understand that. Folks within the industry are, are trying to be more responsive with the renewable, but I also think that we're, we're frying bigger fish.
And I think it's appalling. I mean, I'm not gonna cut off my gas, but whatever. But I think it's appalling that big government or big business, big box business. Would go after and try to say that kids that were trying to stand up to say something that they're liars and that we wanna pull this from the record. And try to silence the voice of young people. And so I, I think that's appalling. But again, I'm not gonna shut my gas because of that, but.
I know you'd have cold showers, right, for the gas washer.
Man, listen.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the thing is, is like, I'm sure a lot of people, they're, everybody's gonna be in a transition. And I think one of, this is part of the conversation I had with a representative from Northwest Natural is that it's. You know, we make a very strong statement for new buildings. I mean, a very, a very clear statement about the direction we're heading with new buildings. And, um, you know, based on what happens with scope one and scope two and like what our target plan is, it's. I don't think like next year, we're just gonna all of a sudden, you know, make a dramatic change versus a, a more a transition. And, um, I, I think to portray it as like all of a sudden, like, there's gonna be a, there's gonna be a glide path. And it's the right glide path. Um, but I think just to, you know, there was a, some suggestions that. Like next year, we're gonna just rip something out and it's gonna be a waste of PPS's money. Or there's not gonna be like a transition, some sort of transition period or transition down. It's just not an accurate representation, at least is my understanding of the district. So. I, I imagine that we have buildings in Pacific Power and PGE territories. And I think I'm happy that I feel comfortable that our, our footprint will take over time. Through electrification. Um, I know the, the gas industry is worried right now because people are starting to like be electrocuted on gas. And I'm thinking about switching out, um, to electric. Um, the technology is, um, is, is moving really quickly. And I also agree with Director Green in that, you know, our kids are leading on this. Have a big stake in the future, our, our climate future. Our resilience in. And so, yeah, thank you for your, for your service. And, and. And your voice.
And to echo that, um, about like companies being scared, the fact that they're coming to us and trying to change a good policy that our students have said pass. Is telling that this has potential to be a really strong policy. Um, so I think let them be scared.
I hadn't thought of that. We, we do live in a capitalist, you know, society.
Um, yeah, and I think that we should really listen to, you know, a large corporation versus our community and our students.
Thank you. Um. So I'm just, yeah, supportive of all my, the previous comments from committee members. Um, the other thing, just since, um, about a month and a half ago, when we were talking about the whole transportation sector, there has been. Tons of information that has come out about just the rapid change in technology and innovation that's happening in the transportation sector. Something like next year, nine percent of all, um, cars will be sold will be EVs. Um, just the whole, the huge investment that the, uh, US, the Biden administration is making in electrification. Um, and also there was, I think it got circulated to committee members, um, a story about, um. The repowered buses that, um, I think Jane, um, had circulated to us. And I forwarded it on to PGE and they have a grant. That's, that's something that they're doing with their grant money as well. So I think some of the places where, just two months ago, we were like, wow, this is gonna be super tough, you know, and I say it's gonna be easy. But just in the two months' time, this is the technology and innovations occurring that, um. You know, by the time, by the time we pass this, it'll, it'll come up with a. you know, by the time by the time we pass this, it'll it'll come up with us. So I think that's like also encouraging that some things that we thought we might have to wait a really long time for changes to to come about. It's just that the pace of innovation is accelerating and the investments in infrastructure in the US. Is there any other comment on this topic?
Why aren't we voting on that kind of policy?
So um you know, I potentially potentially March first, but that would be right on the so if so it'll be a little bit of that. I might come back and talk to the committee member or um it's like survey committee members. If we get some substantive comments that's new and different
For my
that that we might um have another policy committee meeting to discuss that.
Okay.
Um, but otherwise, March first is the
That makes sense.
Yeah. But if we got substantive comment, I for sure would talk to committee members about the, you know, how much people want to discuss it.
Great.
All right. Um, thank you for coming and participating in the in the process. Uh, let's see. So the last item is um it was the weapons explosive and firebombs. And it's now just weapons prohibited uh policy. But this is a change.
Can I ask why we were spelling out firebomb? Like, was there a specific incident?
We were very concerned. I'm not sure what it is, but I requested that leave for a lifetime.
All right. Sorry, Julian.
It's not the fireball. It happens to be one of my favorite drinks. So this is under the category of um legislative or regulatory required policy changes. And um, the legislature I'm gonna provide the layman's, the layperson's version.
Yes, please.
The lawyers can correct me. That the um there there's some cleanup language in here, I think, to make it more accessible, more current. But also, the legislature allows local districts to um prohibit people, individuals who have concealed weapons permits from um bringing guns into schools. And so
And we had, we had, we had this policy in place before the state approved it. So we had, we had prohibited weapons on PPS campuses.
But
Does that include our school buildings?
Prohibit people who had a concealed weapon permit.
Well, we we did. We did. Well, we were telling them they couldn't.
We were telling them they couldn't, but we weren't allowed to by law.
Is that all buildings or just schools? It's uh, we have prohibited PPS grounds are so busy, so. Yeah.
But the law is just for was just for schools, right?
Just for, okay.
Is my understanding. You don't want to say firebombs.
I would hope that's grounds and buildings given what we're seeing nationwide, but
It's all, it's all all building, school buildings, which I know.
BEFC.
Yeah. Actually, what I was asking was, the pol- the legislation was specifically to allow schools. School districts.
School district, school districts.
Okay. So we're allowed as a school district and then we're allowed to do schools or the broader definition of school buildings or a school district buildings?
School district, school buildings would is that kind of like that would be the buildings that are part of the district.
Because what it says in the the red line policy is concealed carry firearm licensees are not allowed to bring firearms on PPS school grounds or in buildings.
Right. So that would be any schools or BEFC.
Stadium or uh, yeah.
Or, yeah, the football field or things like that, yeah.
So um, conceptually, does anybody have an issue with this? I have, I have a second question.
I just have a note that the the on the second page, that um the last sentence, a weapon is any instrument, that should actually be crossed out because it says no person on PPS school grounds or in buildings may possess any weapon, including a firearm. The exception, the exception to this policy are, a weapon is any instrument, thing doesn't error because the definitions of weapon is further down.
Because it doesn't identify the who.
That sentence, that should be crossed out instead of underlined.
Okay.
It's just Aaron.
It's just a scripter's error, but I just wanted to point it out.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just reading it and it didn't make sense. But I do have some clarifying questions that I wanna, I wanna ask about this, this, this.
This is, this is the time. So um we may or may not move it out today. So depending on, because I had have an issue that I want to ask about as well, not that I'm going, but go ahead.
So as I I read it, a weapon is any instrument, article or substance which, under the circumstances in which it is it, it is used, attempted to be used or threatened to be used, is readily capable of causing death or serious physical injury. Then when we drop down, any district employee who reasonably believes that a person is in possession of a weapon, including a firearm, and going back, that's a pencil.
It could be.
That's a pencil.
Oh, wow. I didn't catch that either. Let's see.
And Ms. Calvert knows better than a lot of us in this room specifically why I'm even saying the word pencil. So because the terminology says, in which it is um
Which is being used.
Which is being used or or threatened to be used. So again, it's it's a pencil, that's a, that's a metal a metal, like one of them little soldier people. That that's anything pointing. That's a, that's a uh fingernail file, that's, that's her water bottle, that's anything, any because the the caveat is, it says, is readily uh readily capable of causing death or serious physical injury. Part of my, part of my hesitation with this is not that, because first of all, you're not chasing me with the pencil. I'm not running from no kid with a pencil, you finna get it? And that just is what it is. Catch me on record saying it, everybody know where I live. You not chasing me with a pencil. But the issue that I have is that any district employee who reasonably believes that a person is in possession of a weapon. So now we're going into the mentality and the thinking of the people. And it is what it is. I'm not knocking nobody. I love my people. I I love the teachers. I love them well. But we do have a lot of younger white female teachers who are hyperly threatened or feel threatened by the stereotypes that they see from young black boys who are, quite frankly, taller, bigger and larger than they are. So if we're going based on what they reasonably believe is a threat, I can't tell you you don't feel threatened. So therefore, if I, if you reasonably believe that this is a weapon and that this person is getting to you, then any person violating or threatening um threatening to violate this process as determined by the district may be issued a trespass citation, ejected from the premises and or if you um referred to law enforcement. I, go ahead.
I I I think we can, I think you make an excellent point. And when I pull up the statutory language, the statute speaks to a firearm or destructive device. So we should change that, we should change that language there to near the statute, which is a firearm or destructive device, which I think gets you out of the broader definition.
Okay.
Does that work?
But there's another issue though about a threat disproportionate identification of black males. If they look at the disciplinary
Well, they'd have to have a firearm or destructive advice, device.
Okay. In order to be
In order to, because if you change the definition of weapon, then this last paragraph would follow, which is the person would have either a firearm or destructive.
And which they should act, right?
Yeah, if they got a firearm in school, then hey, get them. No, no, listen, I am not pro anybody
To report the information.
Having a firearm in, if they got a firearm in school.
You have a firearm or a destructive device, I have to report that to administration.
You wave a pistol in school, you go into jail, period. That needs to be the message. If you bring that pistol to school, you go into jail. I am not trying, no, we're not doing that. That is not what's happening here.
Oh, exactly what you're saying is why our student contact policy has been stuck in limbo for years. Because we wrote a policy which I think is student focused and was done with a key book community engagement. And there's, there's conflict with our teachers around just exactly that, that feeling of not feeling safe. And so how do we center students and make sure we have authoritative practices? And we're not using discipline practices that we know aren't successful, like suspension, like exclusion. And and so this, I think Director Green is exactly one of the the problems we have around how do we perceive and relate to our students? And we see it in our disproportionate discipline numbers. And so how do we as a board begin to change that? And I think exactly what you said is part of it. And I also think that, you know, the work that's happening with the discipline policy is another piece of it.
And then also one more thing to add, where would something like, you know, like a pepper spray or mace fall in?
Because people have them.
Yeah, especially like, you know, if, because I remember um low income parent, didn't have cars, right? You had to walk all the way to home. Almost everyone who lived in that situation carried mace.
I had mace on my keychain in high school.
And and also like, you know, especially most of our girls who walk home from school, actually, all the ones I know who walk home from school all carry mace.
Yeah. So then they have it in in full on their back.
Is that considered a weapon?
Mace.
It's not a firearm.
I mean
But it is under the, a weapon is any instrument, article or substance.
We're changing it now. We're changing it to it's a firearm or
No, that's under the
That's the bottom.
I think that's the choice. Do you want to, and I I'm, as I'm reading that language, I think it may
may want to change the definition of weapon to firearm or other.
Right. And so then that carries down to the law. So it shouldn't cover, don't cover that. Like, that'll be okay.
Yeah, mace would be okay.
Well, under this policy, I don't know.
If you
Carrying mace.
Right. So Danny, if you mix a fellow student and then beat them up, not okay. But if you have mace in your backpack for when you walk home on your keychain.
It's a defensive thing, not a like, you don't pull it out to just, you know, just absolutely.
What about a kid who says, I need to have a gun in my backpack as a defensive thing?
So you're gonna get into a whole, they got the kitty cat things now. The the kitty cat things, the the kitty cat ears.
What?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So there's um, I I bought them. I have a set of them for all three of my girls. But they're kitty cat um things, just like a little hole thing. You sit on them. It's got a um a thing and it's got two things that poke out. And it goes on your keychain. And she knows when you walk to your car, you put your hand in here. And this is how you walk to the car. She also knows to press the panic button first because that's gonna draw attention before you press the unlock button. But if it comes down to the get down, then you need to come home and leave anything laying on the ground that needs to lay on the ground. You need to come home. That's, that's the message. It's not um turn the other cheek. Get them down, run them over, come home.
Sports bras, the kitty cat ears.
Hey, I don't, I don't play with it. But I I bring that up because to Danny's point, these are things that they have on their their keychains for the girls that are, the young ladies that are driving to and from school. And it's just a safety measure. But to the wrong person who who's, who's, you know, I'm saying, feeling some kind of way one day, it's just like, that's a weapon. And I feel like you're threatening me because maybe they are having a heated conversation and they don't like the way that you were just talking to them. And because they're young people and that's what young people do, and they're gonna, you know, speak up for themselves. And you happen to be holding your keychains because you got all your stuff and you're getting ready to go. And and now all of a sudden, you think you're threatening me. So I mean.
But the new cool ending thing I've seen on the TikTok is uh that's like a bracelet with like mace and other stuff on it that you like wear.
Oh, wow. I might look at that too.
Is it the TikTok, Danny? Did I do that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything to add?
So there's, there's, there are a few things. This is a very wide ranging conversation. What I would say is that um there is, there is a range of things that you're describing that include prohibited items, right? So I think where this, where things are, I get that to mid point of the conversation of you know, the specificity of what we're saying. So I'm appreciating the language of this bold thing. But then also talking about um, you know, uh, it does connect to the Student Rights Responsibility Handbook and be very clear. And I think there's a lot, so I think there's room for us to be clearer about things, for sure. And also um the language, there's some consistency about language, about um so threat is a big word, right? That's been, the threat has been a big discussion and that will continue to be a big discussion. And um, because it implies intent. And and so there's lots of things. So I I guess there's lots. There's a much larger discussion, I think, than the more narrow the definition or they're clearer, but the definition, I think, is helpful.
But I also think we want to be clear so that if we have a kid say, I'm gonna bring back a gun and shoot up the school, people know to take that seriously.
Yes.
So we also make sure that, or I'm gonna stab you during third period, like those kinds of threats do get taken seriously.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's that.
And one of the things, I mean, it's, I do think it's it's wide ranging and it's a little bit confined by the purpose. One of the legislative change that brought this to the fore, which is you have to have this awkward language about the affirmative defense described in O R S one sixty-six, three seventy-three. It's like a weird thing that's
I tried to bury it at the end.
Yeah, I know. You have to put it in. So you're trying to be able to take advantage of that. And then, and then you try to, like, the rest of the policy was, had some really um, it needed to be reworked. We worked with the O S V A version, a lot of this, but it's trying to do lots of things. And it's very awkward, narrow piece of that affirmative defense language, which I don't know who would pass a statute that says you have to have a policy that says that, but that's actually what it is.
Okay, why, I'm sure, I'm sure they'll check and they'll check because it's Portland.
Yeah.
So I I have a question about the second item, the superintendent has authorized persons to possess weapons. So I totally get number one, because I think the understanding is most law enforcement officers have uh firearms. I had asked in advance of what were examples of the number two.
Art three class and a magician who does night throwing. For an assembly.
The biggest one is from security services. We contract out some additional uh security services for evenings, weekends, sometimes for special events, we
And do they carry firearms?
I thought it was after hours when no one's present. So they're able to respond to events in empty buildings.
So here's my, my issue with having this is um it's so, it's so broad that um because one of the things that happens, like if you have an incident and you call nine one one, one of the things they ask is, I mean, I had this happen two months ago, they ask is, like, are you armed? They want to know if they're arriving to a scene, if anybody's armed.
Oh, wow.
And I mean, it's like you know, like, you had the thing that happened in Vancouver where like, you know.
Well, and I I have an issue with this, this, I think it should be very clear that it's security services that are responsible for that because in Bonita, after Sandy Hook, one of the conversations we were having in the community, if there were teachers who wanted to be armed. And I don't want to stand up in a situation where we have a superintendent who authorizes teachers to be armed.
Well, I'm actually concerned with that last part about just from a um, looking out, thinking about the superintendent's perspective. If something happens, then they're going to say, based on our policy, the superintendent authorized this person to be here. And if it, does it, does it put us in a liability space?
There are lots of, I mean, you play out every scenario. I mean, if they're coming with authority and they act within that authority, then there is, we assume some of that risk by authorizing. But I I don't know what they're doing. I don't know what the thing is that happens, even if they were authorized to come, but maybe they did something they weren't supposed to do.
That part. So
Yeah.
Case in point, there was a, not at a school, not at a school, we're not talking about a school. But there was a shooting that took place within Portland um, at a, at like a nightclub or something.
This is Churchill Tortoise with Washington?
This was a, a young man got killed, well
It was the P S U.
Got shut, no, not, no, not them.
You know which one I'm talking about?
I know exactly which one I'm talking about, the Washington family.
Yeah.
The Washington family, which that's another point. They were authorized. And so, but this person, the 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 nightclub security person who was off duty, you see what I'm saying? And so, but they're authorized. And so we have to start, to me, when
So the police show up and somebody's in un, you know, just
They're unmarked.
Regular clothes.
They're, they're dressed down too.
Well, and I think the law enforcement killed a police officer in Blackwater County in Vancouver.
I I think you don't, we don't have the right staff in the room. I I'm not saying that I think the committee said it wrong, I don't know, but what I think is is we don't have the right staff in the room to talk about the security pieces.
All the different variants.
Or maybe some programmatic pieces or ROTC or I, I don't know all the reasons how this might come up and I think we need some other people in the room to answer questions.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking of like, I'm trying to imagine a scenario, to me, it's like, as it is even, and this is not at all a disparagement of anybody in law enforcement, but there already is bias in law enforcement and like now they're getting more training, so hopefully bias is being removed. But then if you have another class of people who don't have that same training, having, if we're defining a weapon as not a bow and arrow, but a firearm or an explosive device, I just, like, I'm trying to imagine who it is that would be coming on our grounds that I would be comfortable with.
See, and I go, I went, when I read this language, again, I, I went to, maybe there's a cub rental for a hunting class. And so it doesn't say loaded firearm. It says, there's a, you can teach hunting safety, hunter safety, I don't know what these things are called, like.
Eddie Eagle.
Yeah, or it could be a CTE class, it could be, I mean, like, maybe there's a lot, I mean, I don't know all the things, that's why I, I think about, like, when it talks about program, courses, programs, activities, some of, activities can be security related. Courses and programs could be educational and way out over my skis.
I think those are all very reasonable, I think those are all very reasonable things that OSBA probably put in for the 195 districts that are rural districts where people come with their gun racks and go hunting after school or it, it's just a very different thing. I'm just trying to imagine.
Farm towns where everybody.
We have 50,000 students with a lot of interest. I mean, again, I'm not defending it, I just think we should get some actual.
I think we should have a learning.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess I'm going to go back to, if, if, if there is something, and I'm open to, like, there could be something, but like people in the building have to know because there's all sorts of, I went through this like FBI academy and they have all this training and like you have to make split, like, split second decisions. And like when they shoot somebody, it's like you have to shoot till a threat is eliminated. That's, that's the terminology. And so you have somebody in our buildings with, that's authorized, but they're not.
So we need money here to top of that.
And they're not taught to shoot to kill. You shoot the largest body mass and.
But so, and the thing, I guess is like, how would, I'm thinking a principal know like, okay, somebody had a cub permit to do firearm safety or whatever, the class. And something happens, like somebody saw like a bunch of people with guns in the building and it was something else in the, the building administrator or like the custodian didn't know something. And so I'm trying to think of like, what, if there is a case where we allow it, how do people know it?
There's so many.
It's just like, I walked into my church in Vanita one time and there were guns sitting on the coffee table in the like fellowship hall because someone had donated it from the auction. It's like, church, this is reality.
I mean, if you're not raised around guns, it's kind of terrifying.
I'm not going to tell you about my mom putting her gun in the safety deposit box because that was the safe place.
Yeah, I watched the guns in the office.
Literally just sitting in a locker.
When you're 89, you can just put it in a paper bag and lock out, I guess.
All right, so I think we're going to get some staffing back on this policy.
I think we'll come back to the next one. We'll bring staff in the room who actually know what they're dropping.
But I, so I think like we have the range of issues.
I've borrowed, kind of equal cars and they have a gun sitting on the seat, just went down to the driveway and locked.
They're shaking their head, yes, we, we got it.
Oh, my God, look at what time it is.
Nicely done.
Wow. Nice. Way to end on.
Good work, committee.
That is, if we're done.
Did we talk?
Did you say the A word, Julia?
We did. That was the uniform, pardon?
Did you say the A word?
We're adjourned.